Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to everyone. It is January 2nd, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first thing we'll do this evening, if everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Christopher to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Once again, we get to start the meeting tonight with a presentation. And tonight, we have the Plainville Under 12 Girls Softball Team that we're recognizing. And thank you to the town clerk for helping us put the proclamation together. I know we've kept you busy with those lately. But what I'm going to do at this point is if the softball team, if you want to stand at the podium, I'm going to ask Councilman Getteman and Councilwoman Christopher, they have something they'd like to read and present to you. And don't be afraid. And one little thing, once we're all done, you are going to have to stay there to get pictures taken. So don't take off right away when you get your pin.
Proclamation recognizing the Plainville U-12 Girls Softball Team. Whereas, the Plainville U-12 Girls Softball Team is made up of 12 girls from the 6th, 7th, and 8th grades in the middle school of Plainville. And whereas, this is the first time in many years, the Plainville U-12 Girls Softball Team participated in the Northern Connecticut Girls' Softball League. The girls played well and finished the summer season 8-2. And whereas, the team was seeded second in the playoffs, winning against the number-one seed Enfield, and won the U-12 Championship in August, representing Plainville well. And whereas, the Plainville U-12 Girls Softball Team members Asia Benoit, Madison Bond, Arden Campbell, Gillian Chassie, Sophia Cole, Chloe Fangiulo, Ella Grabowski, Dre Elajoy, Katya Sepko, Ashley Thorpe, Courtney Thorpe, and Arden Wishart earned the championship by demonstrating teamwork, sportsmanship, and athleticism. Now therefore, it be resolved that we, the Town Council of the Town of Plainville, on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby extend to all the members of the Plainville U-12 Girls Softball Team and to their dedicated coaches, Jeff Thorpe, Melissa Thorpe, Brian Grabowski, and Brad Cole, our sincere congratulations on a job well done and our best wishes for continued success in the future. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the 2nd day of January 2024. Plainville Town Council, Christopher J. Wazorko Chairman, Rosemary Moranti Vice Chairwoman, Quinn Christopher, Benjamin Getteman, Daniel Hurley, Deborah Tompkins, Dave Underwood. Congratulations.
Are the coaches here? Come on up.
And please feel free, any parents or anyone that wants a picture, feel free to move wherever you need to to get a good picture.
Mr. Chairman, if I may as well, there are copies of the proclamation up here in the front for families who'd like to take them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Everyone hear that? If you do want a copy, they're right on the front desk there or front table. Feel free to take one. Now, we understand you're welcome to stay for the rest of our regular meeting, but we understand if that's not exactly how you want to spend the rest of your Tuesday night. So we'll give you a couple minutes if you do need to leave. You're welcome. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to item number two this evening. We do have a public hearing scheduled, and I will ask the town clerk to read the call to the public hearing, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, in the council chambers of the municipal center in Plainville to hear public comments regarding use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for a boiler replacement project at Plainville High School. Additional cost $181,300, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 28th day of December, 2023.
All right. I don't know, I know we've talked about this for a couple meetings, but, Mr. Town Manager, do we want to just give a quick synopsis of why we're having the public hearing tonight?
Certainly. As you recall, a year ago, we had put this item out to bid, ran into some issues with a challenge on the way it was processed, and so we collapsed the bids, or, a better way to say, rejecting or collapsing the bids, and decided to go back and redo it, engaging an engineering firm to help us rewrite what was a traditional spec and proposal for that. And the result is a higher bid. There was a robust response to the bid package and resulting in a higher number of $879,300, leaving us approximately $181,300 short. But if you recall, the project, when we were here a year ago, looking at that, was, the ARPA dollars were funded for $698,000. So this is a reappropriation, an additional appropriation, if we will, under ARPA funds that we have to do through a public hearing process, is the process we've been following, to give and meet that gap in the current bid for the boiler system. And it involves, if you look at the notation, it involves, from the memo that Andy had put together, that involves another bid item as well, the alternate number one, which is the removal and disposal of the existing underground oil storage tank as part of the project as well. So those are the numbers, and that's why we're here, to hear comment on that project. But essentially, it's an accounting through ARPA to handle the gap for the boiler project.
Okay. All right. Any questions? First, before I open up for comment, anybody have a quick question? Everybody's good. What I'll do then is open up for public comment. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone that wants to comment on this particular issue? Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 654 of San Antonio. Chairman Wazorko, I think you're on error of three minutes. This is a public hearing, so I don't think we're held to three minutes on a public hearing. Am I correct?
I threw it out there and see if you were going to call me on it. So, you know, congrats to you. You're one for one in the new year.
Yeah, wait till the next section. First of all, this school was renovated. We finished the renovation about, what, 12 years ago, maybe? And I believe this is the same boiler, because I was on the building committee, and we converted that boiler from steam to hot water. And when we did that, the boilers are not made for, steam boilers are not made, it's made different than a hot water boiler, and it operates under a lot lower pressure. When they tried to turn it on, we had a lot of porous holes and sections. We had to replace sections. Now, my point is, I suggested to the mechanical engineers that we use, it's another way of heat exchangers, where you leave the steam boiler, and it's a system to it, but they overruled me. They said it wouldn't be feasible. So they agreed, when they changed the sections, that this boiler, under renovated as new, is supposed to last for 20 years. We're into 12 years. So something's wrong with that picture, with this renovated as new systems. It's not working, and you're talking about going into a new one, and it's not, that's not going to work. But the thing is, that the Board of Ed knew about this boiler for a long time, and I think they're irresponsible in not putting together something for a capital project every year and putting some money aside to be prepared for this. Just the same thing like the turf field. We're going to get hit again. They come back to the town council and cry into the town council, "We need more money." And they should be responsible for this under the capital project. And I don't think it's proper for these federal funds, that much of it, to be used for this. And I'm opposed to it. I know you're not going to listen to me. It's on the agenda to approve tonight, and you're going to, but as a taxpaying citizen, I think I have the right to tell you it's wrong. They're irresponsible, and it should be put all under them. They have a huge, huge budget, and I'm sure I could find $186,000 there. They are top-heavy in administration. It's crazy. The taxpayers can't take anymore of this stuff. We all know our taxes are going to go up this year. There's no way they're not going to. And I think you should just not do this. Make the Board of Ed come up with the money to pay for any increase. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishes to speak to the public hearing this evening? Anyone else? All right. I'll close the public hearing. And just a note before I move on, you know, the Board of Ed, this has been a project that's been on their capital plan for a while, and part of the council's discussions during budget deliberations, we have excluded it from, or we've decided not to fund that particular project. So, but I understand what you're saying, Mr. Kislik. It's just, it is something the board has brought to the council's attention for several years, and, you know, this is where we are now. But it's not, I don't think it's the board ignoring it. I think, you know, we both have a piece of this, so, you know, we're just, at this point, we need to replace it, and I think that's where we are right now. But just to give a little bit of information on how we got here. All right. So we will close the public hearing. We will move on to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the December 13th, 2023 special meeting and the December 18th, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, changes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On page, on the, what am I doing with this? Hold on. On December 18th meeting, on page five, the very top where we had to retract the motion about the middle school?
Yes.
On the second one, it says the original motion was unanimously adopted. That should be changed to the revised motion was unanimously adopted.
Any other comments or questions?
I can't find it. I think, right, moment, I believe it's on page five of the regular meeting adjournment.
It is.
Motion. I believe that's what.
Yeah. Yep. You got it.
Dave Underwood made the motion, and Dave Underwood seconded the motion.
Nice try, Councilman Underwood.
Sometimes you gotta double up on it. It's confusing. I mean, that definitely is wrong.
Well, the motion to adjourn, we always get, like, three motions in three seconds.
It's seven all at once.
I believe that was a long meeting, Mr. Chairman.
But thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, those are approved. Item number four, announcements and reports. Anyone with an announcement or report? I know we just got through the holidays, so not many meetings were taking place. Okay? We'll then move on to item number five, appointments and resignations. We do have a few of those tonight. Item number one, Councilman Underwood.
Mr. Chair. Got it. Motion to appoint Dave Massey as second assistant fire chief of the Plainville Fire Department for a one-year term.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to acknowledge Patrick Kilby's request to not be reappointed to the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Francis Crowley from the Aviation Commission. And could we have the town send him a thank you letter for his service? Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number four.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Motion to appoint John Smedley?
Smedley.
Smedley? I'm sorry. As a regular firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
All right. Another motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number five.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
A motion to reappoint Elizabeth Cresswell to the Committee on Aging for the term ending August 1st, 2026. Motion includes reappointing Kathleen Marsan to the Committee on Aging for the term ending August 1st, 2026, and Charlotte Politis to the Committee on Aging for the term ending August 1st, 2026.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any other appointments or reappointments this evening? All right. We can move, seeing it's the first meeting in Monday, we will move past item number six and item number seven, reported to the town attorney. Happy New Year. Anything to report tonight?
I don't really have anything significant to report. We did have a tax appeal. We did have a tax appeal that was just withdrawn after we filed our appearance for the Crisalis Center.
Okay. All right. Any questions, any comments for the town attorney? All right. Thank you very much. We will now move to item eight, town, or reported to town manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just talk about an item that's not on my list here, but I think is important for the council to consider, and that is the subject of the middle school renovation project. I took a meeting with the consultants today and talked about the process going forward, and it was highly recommended that the council appoint a communications committee, a steering committee, if you will, for that process in terms of, you know, gathering information in terms of the project. And so I would, I guess, at this point, recommend that the council consider that this is a regular meeting to amend the agenda, to take that up. And, Mr. Chairman, I know you have some information there as part of that discussion. So I think my recommendation would be that it would be important for the council to take that action, to add an item under the agenda, to form a steering committee, and appoint members that we have talked to that would be interested in serving on that steering committee, which I think will be very helpful and important, given its role would be communication.
Okay.
So, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, no, I just.
Hold that, and I just wanted to get that out before I got into my report.
And we did have a meeting this afternoon, and, you know, usually we like to, you know, talk about these things before we actually have to vote on something, but coming out of the meeting, it was clear that we do need to have a steering committee or communication committee, you know, however you want to call it. And through discussions, you know, the plan would be to have the chair and the vice chair of the board, the chair and the vice chair of the council as members. Ex officia would be the town manager, would be the superintendent. And essentially, the steering committee would be allowed to bring in people, you know, within the district itself, and whoever we need to sit in front of us and help us as far as, you know, we need to come up with documents to communicate the project to the citizens of the town, and this steering committee would kind of just walk that process as we get closer to March. So again, you know, as far as the council's concerned, I apologize for the short notice, but this was something that did come up literally at 5 o'clock this afternoon, and we're doing our best just to facilitate this so we can continue to work on the project and move it forward and get the right communication out to the community before they vote on the referendum. So unless, does anyone have any specific questions or concerns?
Oh.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. We'll move on to item one, which is Honor Heights Ongoing Project, and my notes that there were, and still are, unfortunately, some outstanding items. There have been a number of questions that have been generated as we go through this process, so that we're all comfortable and the council is comfortable in coming to a consensus about not just the final beneficial assessment, but, you know, in terms of the things that we've talked about at previous meetings about the payment plan, duration, timing, and so forth. So there were a few unanswered questions and still remain unanswered at this point, but hoping that we'll get clarification and that, you know, I'm not, I wouldn't push the council to make a decision tonight. Obviously, I'm part of the holding up that process and getting the information, but I want it all to be clear. And I think we are getting much closer to identifying, but things like, you know, the process for facilitating or suggesting, you know, contractors for laterals and possible incentives on the loan package, those type of items. So we met, I met internally with staff today and the superintendents to talk about, you know, a list that we could generate and looking for both John Bossy's input and Joe Also's input as well, to try and make sure that we have, you know, a thorough list and then kind of go through that. And more importantly, creating a process by which the town would be involved in and to what level, how far we can go without, you know, endorsing any particular contractor. But also with a mindset of trying to get the economies of scale, if you will, or the best deal in terms of pricing for what ultimately will be close to 80, 81 properties that we'll be looking to connect. So that was, that was an item. You know, well, you know, penalties on homes that choose not to hook up, I think that probably likely not happen. Decision on the three-family resident, there were a number of questions about what to do on that. We're still doing some research on that, trying to find out, for instance, if they actually have three septic systems of, it's just, it's one septic system, how they're billed, if it's, you know, through water and if there's, you know, three separate water. But I can tell you, one of the questions about laterals, we did lay out three laterals for that purpose and not knowing, you know, how to do it, but that's the direction John had taken in laying out three laterals. So I'm not sure in the scheme of things if it's going to matter, if, you know, whether it has three septics or three, you know, water bills. It's a multifamily, and you have the right to charge for three if you decide to. And you can charge, you decide to charge one time, one time, you know, one fee or three. That's your prerogative. Decision regarding, you know, possible waiver for newer systems installed or repaired in the last five or 10 years. We're waiting for the health department who's trying, it's gone through a transition in their online system, computer system. So they weren't able to access it today for an answer tonight, but we'll hopefully have that as well for the 16th. And I'm not sure it will tell us, they'll tell us everybody they are aware of. There could be possibly one or two families or residents that just got it repaired without pulling the permit through health department. That's possible. But hopefully, they'll be able to give us an identification in terms of how many systems that may be in play that you may want, again, nothing etched in stone, no vote taken, but you may want to consider whether or not you give, you know, a break or some type of waiver or something like that, whatever you want to do in that situation. So that is another answer we do not have at this point. And I did ask for clarification through the town attorney in terms of looking at researching the deferment issue. And, you know, he has come back with some information on that as well. And again, you can set up, you know, a plan under the, you know, to put on a payment plan, but then there's this other situation in terms of outright deferment for anyone that's eligible. And that's what he had done, the research, so I can circulate that information with respect to income-eligible residents, and there may be one or two, maybe more. I don't know. But that we need to get that information to be clear about what that is and who might apply and how we go through applying that if you decided you wanted to do that as well. My understanding, and I could be wrong, I'll defer to Morris on that, that it's not mandatory that you give a deferment, but, no, again, I could be wrong.
I would just indicate that it is not mandatory. There's two different statutes. One of them allows for an installment payment plan, and the other one actually allows for a deferment of the payment of the principal. But you'd still would have to be paying the interest, some interest charge. So even if there was a deferment of the principal payments, there still has to be some interest charged. And I had given the details to the manager. The one that is the installment payment plan would be generally available to anybody that wanted to use it. They would be paying interest like any other loan, and the town would be entitled to a reasonable rate of interest. And on the deferment plan, they'd have to qualify, and that would be either as having under the elderly tax, which is 65, and then there's a whole bunch of other, you have to live there, it's going to be your domicile, you have to live in Connecticut for a year, has to be your home. And then there's income limits of, I think it's $16,200 for single and $20,000 for married. So if they fall within those, then you would be able to give them a deferment, which would, you could decide how you wanted to handle that, how far out you wanted to go, et cetera. It would be a custom plan that you could decide, but the one thing you'd have to make them do, I believe, is pay the, some interest, whatever rate you decide even on the deferment. So that's generally what you'd be looking at if you want to make those decisions. So the installment payment plan and the deferment plan is not paying the principal, but the interest, and then you could set it up so that you could go far enough out and you could get into the estate situation where then it gets paid through the estate if it passes type of thing. But those are all things that we could discuss and suggest to you further. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Any questions? I mean, I just, quick comment, you know, maybe now is a good time for the council to have some discussion. And I apologize to the Honor Heights residents, you know, we had tried to come tonight to make a final decision. I think in my head, looking back, I felt that we had three weeks between our December 18th meeting and this meeting, and it's really only two weeks. And of course, we had the holidays. So in my head, I think, I thought we'd have more time to put together some of the answers to some of the questions we had from our December 18th. So, you know, well, I apologize, we're probably not going to make a final decision tonight. You know, I did bring up the option of maybe next week having a special meeting to kind of wrap this up and come to some consensus and agreement and pass an actual motion to move this forward. So, you know, I know we still have a lot of questions out there, and, you know, whether it's, you know, we've got some information about the deferment possibilities, you know, I don't know, do you want to talk about that tonight in more detail? I know there's some questions just in general on the document that the town manager provided us from the last meeting. So I, you know, I'm looking for the council to give me some direction. I, you know, I do think a special meeting next week might be in order. I know it's another meeting, but I think to give this due consideration, I mean, if you don't like that idea, you could just say, "I don't like that idea." That's okay, too. But yeah, I just, I'm looking to have some discussion.
You also, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you also have this item under old business. You also, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you also have this item under old business and that's another opportunity if you want to ponder now some of the, some of the issues, some of the questions that, that remain. But I think, you know, to recap, and, and the summary helps, I think, I think the council is, is made significant progress. And I thought you were, from the discussions I was hearing, getting close to consensus around the main subject, which is the, the, you know, the beneficial assessment, right? And what that level would be now, whether you, it, it comes down as low as 5,000 or not, but, you know, you had kind of sketched that out and, you know, offering the payment plan, whether, you know, in 20 years or, you know, if you wanted to go for, again, 30 years, but you'd, you'd have it there and 2% versus, you know, the 5% recommended. And, and I think you were getting close, and also the, the lateral incentives package, you know, that, that, you know, a loan with a portion, you know, forgivable as a grant. So I think, I think you were putting the economics together that I think most of the residents were concerned about, the, the pocketbook issues. So the other stuff in terms of, you know, the three-family home, you know, that's not going to affect everybody else in the neighborhood, you know, the deferments are, are important, but probably one or two that are going to be eligible, maybe more. I think the nuts and bolts, you, you have most of it.
Well, just for example, the deferment, like, is that something that would need to be part of any decision we make tonight, for example, or is that something that we can decide in a later?
You'd have to, you'd actually, for the deferment, you'd actually have to pass an ordinance.
Okay.
So you'd have to have a public hearing, pass an ordinance. And I did want to clarify, too, when I gave the income amounts, the $16,200 plus the $20,000, that's adjusted gross income.
Okay.
And so typically, if you're over 65 and you collect social security, that's not going to get included. So you're, you're looking at actually a more significant, more people might qualify than you may expect under those definitions.
Okay.
Because what they do is, and I don't want to get into hyper-technical now, but they actually take the postal pensions and, and railroad pensions and they take those out because under the federal tax code, they would be considered part of your income. And so they take those out because social security would not be so to, when you look at the state scheme. So the point is, more people might qualify for that benefit than you would expect just hearing the numbers.
Okay.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think it would be really beneficial if we had something written, you know, and handed out to us at some point or sent to us in an email where, you know, what we've agreed to at our last meeting and what is hanging out there, you know, for us to make a decision. That's what I thought, you know, we should, we should really have something like that because, you know, everything, all this information is just getting.
Well, the town manager, did you, you did email a copy of, you did email us a copy of what?
Summary, yeah.
The summary. Did you see that?
No, I did not.
Okay, that did get forwarded to the council. And again, that's where I'm, I'm, you know, I, I really hate to drag this out further, but I, I think, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this and, and I don't want to, you know, miss something or, you know, and again, I, my way is probably not necessarily the right way, but I'm looking if any council members, certainly we should have something in front of us on paper that we can vote on. I agree with that. We do have some outstanding issues that we still need to talk about. How you want to proceed, you know, I'm certainly open to anyone's suggestions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we should have that meeting that you're talking about where we totally devote the meeting to the subject of Honor Heights and we knuckle down and we put it all together. And we come out of that meeting with an answer for, not only for ourselves, but for the, the Honor Heights people. And we can go right to the public hearing the next, next week and, and just seal the deal. I think that we've got suggestions that can be added to whatever we come up with at that meeting, as the town attorney has said, that's something that we have to work out so we can add it later because we'd have to go through an ordinance thing and everything else for it. So let's separate that away from what we're, we're dealing with right now. I think the most important part of this whole thing is the incentive program that we come up with to get people to hook up. I think personally, we, we've all kind of expressed the $5,000 assessment fee and 2% for an interest, 20 years to pay, that, that comes out to $250 a year plus, plus interest. So that, that's held a lot better than $500 a year plus interest when we were talking with the 10. These other items are, like I said, important to encourage people to hook up. And if we can more or less come up with a loan program, I guess that's the best way to describe it, and make it reasonable for, for a sum of money, we can actually do that now, knowing that we've heard estimates mentioned in various conversations of anywhere from 5,000 up to 10,000. So we'll, we'll set the loan limit up, up to 10 or $12,000 to do, to do the, the hookup. But that's discussion we could have and we could put a motion on table, we could do it piece by piece, or we could do it the whole thing. But we have to, I think we have to make it so that it's, well, as a personal, as a homeowner, I would, I would like to see the, the incentive to have to hook up. Be too, too good right now to not do it. And as I understand, there are now a couple of other people, a couple of other homes out there that are in the, in the failing range. So they're going to, we need to discuss whether we can get people to be able to hook up before April, like, you know, even, even now.
And can I, I don't mean to interrupt, but is it possible that the summary you provided, can we just get copies because it sounds like not all of us up here have copies of that?
When did that get sent out? Was that today?
Oh, no. It was, it was last week, I believe.
No, I, I didn't receive it then because I search, I name-searched Mike's name every day and I haven't gotten anything.
It was part of the packet.
It was sent on 12/21.
No.
All right. Well, let's, yeah, let's.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is the summary we were referring to the one that was, there was one that was sent back in December, but I believe it's also in the packet.
Correct.
Yes. There is one in the packet.
But it's still the, the version that was distributed back in December where it lists considerations, but then it still splits up staff suggestions from town council consensus. And I think what we're moving toward now is one document that just gives the town council consensus and does so perhaps a little more concisely and clearly than, than, and this was sort of a working document or a draft.
Yeah. I thought we came up with a lot of really good ideas.
Yep.
And we all agreed with everything that was presented and we just had a couple outstanding things left to do. So I don't really think it should be a lot that we still have to do.
I agree. I don't think it's a lot. And you, you'll see, when you get a copy of this, you'll see that the town manager has put together, you know, a nice breakdown of what we, I think, consensus-wise, we, we agreed to, so.
One of the outstanding things that really isn't listed on this, on this is what, what, how are we going to determine those that have recently or within a certain period of time have rebuilt their septic systems and they've spent thousands of dollars doing it? And are we going to exempt them from having to hook up and, and getting and paying water charges and that's a consideration we need to, to tackle. Personally, I, I think it's easy enough to just say anybody that's got documentation that can prove in the last 10 years, they updated their system, they, they got at least another 15 years on their system before their warranties or stuff, usually their 25-year guarantees. So I mean, I'd like to suggest if people's minds, like, for anybody within the last 10 years that's upgraded, have a 10-year exemption from everything except the, the beneficial assessment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Last meeting, I had spoke of what I did in, in Hillman Court. I moved in there 30 years ago and I had to redo the leach fields. Those leach fields cost me $7,000. Back then, that would be equivalent to $30,000 today. And when I did it, I horseshoed the leach field so that I get 25 years or better out of each side so that when one side failed, I'd be all set for the other side. So when we say 10 years out, I think you got to take a look at it. If a person can verify the fact, and I, I know there's some people in this room right now that I know personally, years ago, maybe 15 years ago, not 10 and not 30, spent quite a bit of money redoing their leach fields and set them up pretty much the same way I did mine. So I don't live in that neighborhood anymore, but if I did, I'd probably say, you know, in fairness to me, I was thinking in, in the future, and I did mine for 50 years. And again, $7,000 back then was a lot of money. So I'm just saying this, we'll, we'll have an openness about this when we discuss it, certainly. 10 years may not be the, the magic figure, maybe 15. I mean, 30 years, it goes a long time. But I think that some people would be offended by the fact that somebody with 10 years got a break and they did theirs 15 years ago and didn't get one. So we got to be open with this when we discuss it. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, a question for the town manager through you?
Yeah.
Okay. The health department and, and they were contacted today about preparing that data. Do they think they will have that available this week?
Yes. They, they couldn't access it, but felt that in a couple of days, they should have an answer for us and I'll be, you know, obviously following up with them because that, that's important. And I just, you know, hope it's thorough enough that we, you know, we don't overlook somebody. And hopefully, you know, it'll be a comprehensive review and that everything, as it should, have gone through department of, you know.
So it would be, it would be replacements or repairs that were properly permitted.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah. And I, again, I can ask the question from their perspective. I'm no expert in, in, you know, septic systems and, and, and the failure rates and/or, you know, if you've, if your system has failed the first time and you have to repair and/or replace. And I'm not sure what the difference is in terms of, you know, you know, and what the level of engineering gets involved, but, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's guarantees on, on systems that if you, you know, if you spend 20,000, you get 20 years. I don't know if contractors do that, but I think they might know. And so I can ask those questions just to see in their experience what, what they can tell me about the process.
Okay. I had another question.
Yeah.
Okay. And also, one question that I had on the summary document, the December summary document, whereas we talked about the $1,000 grant and the 60 calendar days, can you clarify the 60 calendar day piece?
Yeah. I think we were just looking to have them, if, if they were getting the, the loan and the grant, it would be a grant if they, if they were to hook up within that 60 days, right? And I think that's why we, we had, what I think had indicated putting that in there as an incentive, further incentive to be, be timely and get them, to get them, them hooked up versus taking a loan and, and waiting, you know, longer than that. And then we'd say, okay, then we forgive 1,000 of that.
Okay. Would that actually be hooked up or have, having signed a contract to hook up or?
I, I, I think the feeling was actually hooked into the system, not just, you know, talking with the contractor, but having the actual online on the system, in the system.
Okay. I just was wondering, you know, if there could be, you know, construction holdup or something, if that could.
Yeah. And, and again, I mean, 60 days, 60 days, you, you could feel as a group, you know, we want to really incentivize them so, you know, try to get it done in 30 days. I mean, this project is coming, this project is, is there, the system is in, so there really isn't any, it's just a personal choice in terms of maybe they're, maybe they're going to be hosting an event and they don't want to tear up the lawn for us this spring and they want to wait until, you know, after a certain event or something that's happening in their, their lives.
And it would be 60 days from the system going online, so to speak.
Right. And whatever, yeah, really whatever date you, you want to set, I mean, we had talked about, and John had suggested April 1st as, as terms of, you know, starting date to turn, sort of connect people and put people online in the system, but.
Okay.
Could be anything, again, food for thought, just unresolved, but just, again, suggestions that we need to say it's going to be 60 days, say it's going to be 2%, say it's going to be 20 years, 20 months, or, you know, 30 months or 20 years or whatever we're going to do.
All right. So now, you know, we all have the draft in front of us, you know, and I agree with Councilwoman Tompkins, we do, I think, have 80 to 90% of this ironed out. I think it's this last 10 or 20%. You know, I, we do need to get an answer from the health district, you know, regarding the question about, you know, quality of life and what's considered, you know, a health problem, you know, for those particular families. But, you know, we do have to talk about the grant eligibility, you know, requiring a hookup within 60 days, you know, is that something you guys like 60 days? Do you want more time to think about it? It's, you know, and that's why I think we're, we're really looking to, to make a final decision at another meeting. I think there's still some questions as, to tightening that up, you know, obviously the waiver for newer systems. Councilman Hurley made a suggestion, you know, and was it 10 years, Councilman Hurley?
That, the number was up to debate. I mean, I actually like what Councilman Underwood said as far as time.
You know, I don't know from an administration perspective, you know, I don't know, John, if you're, you ready to chime in yet? Or is there anything you've heard yet that you, you want to clarify or correct or ask a question?
I'll, I'll wait for a specific question.
Okay. All right.
I, I have one other question. The, the sewer charge that we get once a year for the people that are already in town that are already getting it, we get it in November and of course, there's this second payment, you could do it in two payments or one payment. That's the charge we're talking about exempting people from?
Yes.
In, in Honor Heights for, for 30 months? Is that what we're talking about?
No.
So that's the, are you talking about the connection?
Well, you got the availability of the loan program is going to be for, for a 30-month period, right? Starting at whatever time we say day one is. So it would be, you know, 30 months from that point forward?
Yeah. They would have 30 months to make a decision on whether or not, yes, they would, you know, I imagine whatever date we pick starts the clock and.
Are people, are we proposing people to be charged the minimum charge, which is for, right now, 424 and change, starting from day one when we put this in, in effect? So every November, they would get a $424 bill?
No.
Or are we, we sticking that out a few years before they have to pay that fee?
Yeah. I think the recommendation was that would be waived for 30 months.
No matter what.
Okay.
Correct. And then, and again, you know, we're talking, and I, this is why we're being very careful because there's, there's a ton of moving parts and as you can see, even from our perspective, we want to make sure we understand exactly what's going on. So I understand if some of you are frustrated, but I, I think this is a good process to go through because we got to make sure we're all on the same page and we all understand what we're talking about. So, so yeah, I, so yeah, 30 months, that would be waived for 30 months.
From day one?
And I think we determine what day one is.
Okay.
Correct? I, I don't know, I, I'm just saying it like I'm confident in that statement, but if that's wrong, let me know.
Yeah. You're, you're, again, you have the latitude to, to go through any piece of this, you know, again, looking at whatever number you want to look at. But again, you know, the rec, some, some of the things you got to think about also is on, and on the totality of things, right? So, you know, the recommendation would be in connection, giving him up, or the recommendation was up to 18 months, right? And now if you want to push that off to, to 30 months, you got to consider the fact that, you know, revenue is not coming in, right? So you've also, and again, I understand the economics, but, you know, the, the fact of the matter is million dollars spent on the project and you're going to fund it through, you know, the sewer fund. So, you know, a year, or in the next fall, fall of this year, when you sit as a body to set the rate, you're setting a rate that, that has to recoup that. And then if you're pushing it out, and again, maybe we can run the numbers, but maybe insignificant, I don't know, but. maybe we can run the numbers, but maybe insignificant, I don't know, but it's a thought in terms of saying, okay, and what about the next year? If you're pushing, you know, thirty months out, not that these individuals, you know, depending how many, you know, take care of or sign up for the loan, but there's some financing involved here in terms of the fund. And again, the fund is super healthy. That's a great thing.
Yep.
Right? However, there's a caveat that, you know, we don't want a catastrophic event to happen that would, you know, force us to do other things that we needed to do. So just big picture thoughts in terms of, you know, financing and, not that I think you're giving away the store, but, I mean, you don't want to do that either, is, I guess, is my caution. And I think you've done a great work in terms of getting to a point where you're incentivizing and trying to get as many people to hook up, given the economic situation and circumstances for many of these families, that this is not insignificant, and I understand that. But there's also a side of you as a Water Pollution Control Authority members and the totality of the system and the fund. That's all, that's my point.
No, and I think we understand that, you know, decisions we make, you know, at some point, that money needs to be, I don't want to say made up, but, you know, we are going to have to make some, this has ramifications three and five years down the road.
Mr. Chairman, in my thinking, this exempting from the sewer charge for the thirty months is critical to being an incentive for the people to hook up and get the number of hookups we need to make the system work. I think if we don't get a lot of people to hook up, the system is going to be expensive in that, as I was talking with our leaders in the department over there, they think it'd be a substantial increase of workload for them if we don't get the right flow. So, and then John has made a point of that also. So it's really critical that, I think, we do everything possible to encourage people to hook up and make it financially a good deal, a really good deal. And we can balance it out. I'm sure that, you know, when we go to do the water things later on, as the Water Commission and come up with charges for next year, we'll be able to cover it and spread it out over the coming years in order to recoup. But at the same time, when we, if we've got a lot of people hooking up, we've got a lot of income coming in, so it works two ways.
Well, what, do you have something?
I'd just like to say, as far as having the meeting next week, I'm fine with that as long as we have all the answers. We can't keep asking these people to come out and sit here night after night while we don't have answers, first of all. Second of all, I also think this process has gone backwards. I think all this should have been done before there was a shovel in the ground. And it may have determined whether or not a shovel went into the ground. So we're playing catch-up here, and we need the answers so people can have a resolution, so they can take a shower every day, you know? And whether that means next week or the week after, we can't have it until we have the answers to these questions and we discuss it, you know? The more I sit here, the angrier I get because these people didn't ask for this. It was forced down their throats, most of them.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I think we need another meeting. I feel like although we've come to a consensus on many of the topics, I feel like there's still some questions and maybe some confusion. I mean, like, stuff was thrown out to me tonight, and I'm like, what? So I think one more meeting, just to clarify every single detail of this process, so we're all on the same page. I think we owe it to the citizens of that neighborhood to present them with a consensus of like a final, like where we stand, so they know. You know, I don't like seeing these words, not determined, to be debated further. I think we just have to have a clear list of what it is we would like to do, and so the citizens can also see this list, so if they have questions. This is a very big decision for them, so I really want to make it clear to them what we are offering, and I think we all need to make sure we're clear on what we're offering. So I am in favor of having a special meeting to really iron this out, be very concrete, and then go from there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, you know, definitely agree with that, and we should, I think Mr. Hurley said earlier, do it, you know, item by item, and maybe starting with a draft, something in writing, item by item, and, because we do, actually, I think we do have consensus on some really big pieces of this, which is great. And I know that we've had gotten some positive feedback on that as well, and formally after the last meeting, but I think, you know, if there's anything outstanding, such as the three-family houses, which is, maybe that's the one thing that still would have to need some work, but hopefully, we can have the rest of the information and be able to make the decision on all the other pieces. And I would see us going down the list, one item by one item, because I think, you know, once, we can get a lot out of the way pretty quickly, and then deal with just a few of the pieces at the end.
Well, we certainly, you know, we have the draft here, you know, certainly, if we do have another meeting, you know, we certainly can go down the list and just approve what's on the draft, because I think, like you said, we do have consensus to move forward. You know, one of the things, again, though, you know, considerations for recent septic repairs, you know, that's something we need to, you know, as a council to make decisions on, you know, getting an answer from the Health District regarding, you know, quality of life and what, you know, what determines an emergency situation, we're still waiting for, you know, and even, I guess, you know, just looking at my notes, you know, the waiver for newer systems or new septic systems, we do have to iron that out, so, I mean, there's three things that I think, you know, we need to, over the next week.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Also, at the same time, to go along with what you're in your line, we need to help these people form their own association committee, whatever you want to call it, maybe get volunteers to come forward from the Honor Heights, that we can put a committee together that they can work along with the council.
Yeah.
I don't know how to go about forming one, but I just encourage people to contact any one of us that they want to be on a working committee that will look into the contractors and be able to talk to their neighbors and friends, passing information back and forth so that we can make this as simple as possible for everybody. I think it's critical that we do that.
Okay. You know, anyone else with any questions? I mean, I, you know, we probably could talk two more hours about this, but, you know, as far as I see it, you know, with what's on the draft, you know, I think we have a consensus on moving forward with that stuff. I just outlined three of the questions that we still have. I would ask that, you know, we do our best to get answers by the end of the week so that, you know, I don't know if anyone's available next Monday or next Tuesday for a special meeting, but that we plan on it, at that special meeting, you can let the town manager know your availability if you can't do it right now, but the plan would be to actually take some formal votes on, you know, whether we go piece by piece and we just formally approve, or we approve a bunch of stuff at once and...
And build an agreement.
And iron out the last two or three things that's over our heads. That would be my recommendation at this point.
Do you need a motion?
No, I don't think we need a motion, because we can call a special meeting, we just have to give twenty-four hours notice. One thing that we would want to do, though, is obviously communicate to the Honor Heights neighborhood, if we were going to have a special meeting next week, what that date would be.
Yeah, I mean, if you'd like, I can poll the members tomorrow with respect to...
Yeah, we'd have to get something out quickly.
...Monday, and then, yeah, try to do the best we can to communicate with residents there, if you choose Monday or if you choose Tuesday.
...time you'd be interested in, because Monday has a zoning work appeals in here at seven thirty. Tuesday's planning and zoning, so Tuesday's planning is open.
Yeah.
And those are hardly been always been used. So that's...
All right. Well, we could, I mean, can we meet at six o'clock? I mean, I'm not asking you, but six o'clock, would everyone be available?
On which day?
I mean, honestly, if they have to be in here at seven thirty, I like the idea that, yeah, that we have a time limit and need to make some decisions and stick to it.
Yep. Monday or Tuesday is fine with me.
All right, Monday the eighth?
Yep.
Six o'clock.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, you guys, for...
That would be available for the audience to be here.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, yes, yes.
So Monday, six o'clock.
Yep.
What's the date? Eighth?
Eighth.
All right, so if there's any other questions regarding Honor Heights at this point, otherwise, well, I think we're up to what? Item number two under your report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item number two. I don't think I need to say too much on that. Shuttle Metal Pump Station Project, obviously, we had the presentation from Paul, and you've gone through the numbers there, that we had a good bid response, five bids with the lowest at three million and the highest at four point two million, and that Tigen Bond has reviewed and evaluated the bid information submitted by Kovacs and believes the bid to be reasonable and competitive, and there's an item under new business to take action to award that to Kovacs. So I just want to, I guess I could add one or two thoughts on this, and probably you picked up on this in the presentation, but there's a certain liability issue and OSHA issue with confined spaces, and I give credit to Joe and his team for, over the years, you know, consolidate, I mean, not consolidate, but standardizing the submersible to get away from that, to reduce our liability, and also to have an opportunity to share parts and be, you know, familiar with the operations on that. So, you know, I think those shouldn't go unnoticed, those points that are very important to this project as well. So that's all I'll say on that. And item three is the White Oak Redevelopment Project Update. I just wanted to, again, talk about the progress being made there. That remediation environmental cleanup was completed on the interior of the buildings to remove hazardous building material. The remediation was performed by Enviro Consultants and Recyclers Incorporated, stripping the interior down to the studs, and there is a packet of photos there that I hope everybody's got a chance to take a look at that, but they've pretty much done their job on the interior, and so now the phase of the project will transition to the exterior, and a analysis of the contaminated soil in the back of the property behind the buildings was performed, and the study resulted in identifying a well-defined area of contamination, which we used to write the bid specifications for cleanup. However, in talking with Cal Halberger, who is the Economic Development Coordinator, he's working with Tigen Bond on preparing a second application for funding because we've exceeded what the original was, based on what issues we ran into on the front end on the interior remediation. So we've got to go back to Connecticut deep state and look for additional fundings that they refer to as a Capper grant or Capper funding for that project, which is often the case when you embark on environmental cleanup, you don't always know what's there. You do the best you can to identify that as much as you can, so we're in the process of doing that, and so this project will transition to the exterior and to the soil cleanup, and I hope those pictures speak a thousand words in terms of what was done inside to help illustrate the significance of what they've done on the inside, so. And that's it for, you know, my three items, and the fourth being, I know you're all waiting for, happenings, and I'm going to turn it over to Andy.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, a couple of happenings to report today. From the Revenue and Tax Collection Office, starting on January first, the town will be collecting the second installment of real estate and personal property taxes, and additionally, the town will be collecting the motor vehicle supplemental bills, and all bills are considered delinquent after February first. From the Public Library, and for all information on library programs, including registration, you can call the Plainville Public Library at eight six zero seven nine three one four four six, or you can visit www.plainvillect.com/library. On Thursday, January fourth, at nine thirty AM, they'll be doing a sensory exploration. This is presented by the CAP Lab of Yukon. It is open to individuals ages zero to eleven months with the caregiver, and essentially, everyday household items are used to become tools for building curiosity and engagement in musical sensory exploration for infants. Rosie the Riveter, Connecticut's working woman of World War II, will be on Tuesday, January sixteenth, at six PM. This is for adults and teens. The Connecticut Museum of Culture and History will discuss Rosie the Riveter, the most iconic image of the working woman during World War II, and the impact she had on women in Connecticut. And from the Senior Center, and for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at eight six zero seven four seven five seven two eight. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Caregiving Connections will be on Tuesday, January ninth, at ten AM, and this is an opportunity to connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center to support one another on the journey of recognizing the challenges and frustrations of 24/7 caregiving. You are asked to call ahead to register. AARP Income Tax Preparation, signups begin on January seventeenth for free income preparation tax assistance. This program is hosted by AARP, and they provide certified tax preparation individuals to assist folks who need help with that. The Snappy Seniors Photography, on Thursday, January eighteenth, at ten AM. Members with all kinds of cameras and various levels of experience are welcome to join the club to talk about photography and take pictures. A Vaccine Clinic is open to the public on Monday, January twenty-second, from nine thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. Vaccines for the COVID virus, flu, RSV, shingles, pneumonia, and tetanus are provided. This is in partnership with Stop &amp; Shop, and appointments are required. And the final thing is Help for Veterans on Tuesday, January twenty-third, at ten AM. This is by appointment only, and you can call Jason Coppola, the Veteran Service Officer, at two zero three eight zero five six three four zero. This is open to veterans of all ages who live in the fifth congressional district. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. Before we, any questions or comments for the town manager that we haven't already covered? I would like to just, with the town manager's opening report, he talked about adding to the agenda a motion to form a steering committee. I would just like, can someone make that motion to add it to the agenda? It'd probably be item number four, and we'd move tax refunds to item number five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add it, add the Steering Committee, MSP Building Project Communication Steering Committee to the agenda.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so that will be item number four, and tax refunds will move to item number five. So at this point, we'll move to public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address, and this time, you'll have three minutes, right? Mr. Kislik, you want to go first?
Yep, in case you have the big crowd have to discuss more. John Kislik, 65 Forestville Avenue. First thing I'd like to do is echo the comments of Gail Dennehy on her excellent presentation and arguments, asking the council to give the residents a choice on the projects on the middle school. Next thing I have is, I'd like to see transparency in government. It seems to be lacking lately, and so I've been filing Freedom of Information requests, and in the name of transparency, I share them with Chairman Wazurko. The town manager has been really evasive in answering my freedom of informations. The first one I asked, he received a raise, so I asked what any increases were in benefits, in amount of money, and all he did was send me his new salary of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that forced me to file another Freedom of Information to get his old contract, so I could subtract it and find out what his raise was. His raise was five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, you gave him three and a half percent. So that's one thing that he did, and another thing that's happening in this town, all of a sudden, we got a part-time town... town hall and part-time town manager four days a week. I mean, I hope that this council changes this and goes back. The taxpayers deserve better than a part-time town hall and part-time town manager. This is not right. And in my Freedom of Information request, I asked him, who initiated this and who brought it to the council? His answer is, there's no documentation related to that question. Now, this is ridiculous for a town manager to give me an answer like that. Somebody brought this to it, and it doesn't have to be a document. You could just tell me, who initiated? Maybe you can tell me who initiated this and why the last council even accepted something like that. You know, we're going to be the laughingstock of the state having part-time town hall and town manager. Any other thing? The town manager, I don't know what you've done about his residents out of town, but under our charter, under town manager duties, one of his duties is to enforce the town charter. So, by not living in Plainville, not only is he violating that part of the charter, he's violating a part of the charter under his duties. Now, let's do something about this council. Come on, we deserve better. I want a full-time town hall. The seniors are the only ones with some backbone who came out here and told you what they wanted, and you caved and you had to know. I don't know where the rest of the people are in this town, but I'm here, and I'm a senior, and I want to see this town go back to a real town. Thank you.
All right. Did you want an answer to that question?
Sure.
Or was that rhetorical?
No, I would love an answer.
Well, you know, again, can you just ask that question again so I make sure I'm answering what?
Who initiated the idea to go to a four-day work week, and who presented it to the town council?
Well, that, I mean, that was a conversation between the town manager and the council.
But who brought the idea up? The town manager brought the idea up?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, short answer, yes.
There you go. Come on, Chairman Wazurko. You have somebody who doesn't even care enough about our town to want to move to Plainville.
Well, I think you're a little out of line there. I think you're, I think you crossed the line there.
But he wants to show up to work for four days.
Let me finish my answering your question. You know, you talked about a part-time town manager, and I don't mean to speak for him, and he certainly can stick up for himself, but he certainly works more than part-time. You know, the amount of hours he spends just in Plainville, never mind how much time he spends at home working on town manager issues, but you're certainly not getting a part-time town manager. And, you know, if any other council member disagrees with me, please say something, but I think that's just a little bit a mischaracterization of the town manager. Now, granted, we are closed on Fridays. You are, you know, I wouldn't categorize that as part-time, but I understand your frustration with the fact that we're not open on Fridays, and you feel we should be. Now, the council, the last council didn't cave to the seniors. We said, this is a pilot program. We were going to, you know, look at it, let it run for a while, and make decisions. And the council, I think rightly, made the decision that the Senior Center needed to be open on Fridays. Town manager was one of the first ones who suggested that we need to reopen the Senior Center on Fridays. The council agreed, and we made that change. So, you know, I don't think it's a matter of us trying to, you know, I feel like you think we're just thinking of ways to screw you over, so to speak, you know? And we're not. I mean, we honestly, this is a program that we felt was something we needed to look at, you know, as far as retention of employees, you know, the market is very tight for employees. You know, in the end, once we analyzed everything, I think it was something we needed to do. But we can make changes like we did with the Senior Center.
Right.
So, you know, I, you know, and I understand your point. I might not agree with your point. I understand what you're saying, and, you know, this isn't something that's not going to be discussed, or we're not going to revisit at a later date. It's something we're going to constantly review and analyze and see if we're doing things the right way. So, you know...
Well, I hope you review it soon. The charter and the town manager's contract say he is supposed to devote full time to the job. To me, four days, I don't care if he works 12 hours a day, four days is not full time to me.
Okay, and that's, and that's fine. That you're...
We, the taxpayers deserve better, Chris. Come on, you've been sitting on here for so long. That's like, I mean, just crazy to do something like this to the citizens. It's not only that. You're going to have to park and wreck in the summer on Friday. There's going to be so many other things where you need five days a week. You know, it's just the way I feel.
No, I understand. I'm not telling you...
Maybe I did get a little bit out of line, but I'm frustrated with this.
And I understand your frustration. You know, but I just...
You have somebody who has, making $175,000 a year, has benefits that people will kill for, and he's going to come to Plainville four days a week. This is wrong. That's not how government's supposed to work.
I would bet, on the average week, he's here more than four days a week. I just, you know, and I know it's not a punch-in, punch-out type of situation, but, you know...
Well, I took up enough of your time. I had a busy night, and I'm tired.
Thank you.
I feel like, I feel like I'm at a Board of Ed meeting.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way.
And the three minutes, I thought I was standing in front of my good friend Kathy Paglisi. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I can't let that go without comment. Obviously, I'm offended by that. I don't ever consider myself a person that gives less than 110%, and whatever community I happen to work in, and I'm working in Plainville. And I think it's also a disservice to the fine men and women who work here as employees to think that they're doing less than they should be doing on their job. It's really a slap in the face, and I think some of this is getting personal, maybe because, you know, John wasn't appointed to, you know, the rec commission, and, and I don't know, and I'm sorry about that, but I think in, you know, we look for fit, we look for, you know, people that are going to serve without an agenda and just do the right thing by the community. And I'm trying to think it's not personal, but I'm starting to feel like it is. And that's unfortunate because I came here with the belief that I had something to offer, and I believe I do, and that I give 110%, and I'm here, and I'm wired like everybody else. And, you know, the reason we're going and motivating us to get to a four-day is, first of all, it makes it sound like we were open five days a week. We weren't. Five, well, half a day on Friday. So, you got rid of a half a day on Friday to be competitive with state workers and other employers, municipal employers around the state who are moving in this direction. And if we're not moving there, we're falling behind. You're going to be looking for position, and we already are, that we cannot fill, like engineering and other places. Try to look for a building official. You can't find one. And, you know, we're in a competitive world right now, and working for the state, people can be working at home and working virtual. That's not an option that we have, which is, we've gone to a four-day to try be competitive. That was the motivation. It is a pilot. We're looking at, I think it's working well. I'm sorry he disagrees with that, but again, and again, and the other issue, you know, I think I'll stop there. There are a whole bunch of issues with that, but I thank you for your comments, and I will always give 110% for this town.
All right. Mr. Sudak, I think you are looking to talk next.
Francis Sudak, 48 Washburn Drive. Two issues, I'll mention them first, so I want to get in under the three minutes. The deferment issue, I suspect there could be more people that would be eligible for that, and I think it would be helpful if we could publish the requirements to get under the bar so that those people would be eligible. Who knows? If you're managing to get by and you're not looking for a handout, where are you going to find that person in your paperwork that they're eligible? You know, at one point, there was 40% of our neighbors that were senior citizens. Some of them could qualify, but they're getting by one way or the other, but they could qualify, and they should be able to take advantage of it. The second one is the lateral connection and the town funding it and the $1,000 giveback. I don't quite understand the 60-day period very well. Before somebody answers, I would say, those incentives, since you want us to hook up, those incentives should be good for either 12 or 18 months, not a short period where you got to make a quick decision. A lot of people aren't comfortable making quick decisions, especially if you're elderly. You know, you're hemming and hawing, and all of a sudden, before you know it, the window's gone for you to hook up and get the incentive. You want us to hook up, so make it incentive-wise beneficial to us by giving us 12 or 18 months. Now, I don't know if the 18-months conflicts with the 60-days or not, but it seemed to me to be in that vein, so whether or not there's a conflict, I think that the benefits should be available for either 12 or 18 months. So, you got a little time to make a decision. And as far as rushing this along to get everything done, I would counsel you to say, take your time and get it done right rather than fast. So, if we don't even have to have the eighth meeting, we could put it off, maybe even until your next council meeting or after that. What's the big deal? Why put everybody under pressure to get it done in a short period of time? Use a little common sense and say, hey, you shouldn't be pushing everybody, "I need it, I need it, I need it" type thing. So, with that in mind, if anybody's got any questions for me on what I said.
Did well with the time.
Yeah.
And once again...
Yeah.
Thank you for what you're doing for us. We wouldn't have gotten this from the previous council. I'm sorry to say that to the two minority status, but...
There's also two others here.
Well, no, that's what I'm talking about, you know? But with the previous full council, I question whether we would be getting this package.
It's not relevant.
All right.
And I'm a Republican, by the way.
All right. Just, can we get, I'm just going to talk, yeah, I don't have a question, but, you know, we certainly can get something in writing about the deferment policy and...
I sent an email there.
Okay, so we will, we will be able to have that. We'll be able to put that to print. And again, you know, we do have to talk about, you know, the incentive for connection of lateral, the 60-day.
I have a question about that.
Well, you want, why don't we wait? Can you hold it until we get to old business, and we'll answer that?
Absolutely.
We'll let people have their say. So, yes, anyone else wish to address the council? He was up first, but I could go...
Go for it. No, no, go ahead. Go for it. Flip a coin.
How's it going? Matt Natale, 5 Shepherd Lane. The only thing I have to say about the 60-days is it can be incredibly hard to schedule contractors. I have my own guy, and if I just call him with a lack of information and say, hey, plan for these two months, he's going to go, I'll let you know. So, in terms of scheduling, I think you guys got to figure out the 60-day window or make a decision so that you can finalize contractors, or we can ourselves to figure it out. That's it.
Well, thank you. All right, Mr. Frangos. You were the second one with their hand up. And then, Gail, I think, you're sitting back, Gail was next.
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. I got this all written down. Let me start by saying that I have no problem with the Plainville Town Manager not residing in Plainville. The problem is, as I understand it, according to the Plainville Town Charter, the individual in the Town Manager's position must reside in Plainville. I also understand that during the recent towns' elections, the question presented to the voters regarding the appointment of a Town Manager not to reside in Plainville was also defeated. Needless to say, I know nothing about the Plainville hiring process regarding a Town Manager, but I assume that there is a contract involved in which, in which, in this case, notifies the selected candidate, he or she shall reside in Plainville. With this said, how is the Town Manager's relocation solution being settled?
Well, this is, it's a council decision. It's not, and I haven't had any conversation with the council about it. You know, what I can tell you is, as in past practices, we have allowed a period of time for any Town Manager to move into Plainville, because as you've noted, it has been something that previous Town Managers have also had to, I don't want to say accept, that's the wrong word, but, you know, it was something that was part of the job. But right now, my, what I would like to do is to set up a work session or have a discussion amongst the council as to what we should, next steps, because I don't feel that that question, it wasn't, you know, the communication from the town side, well, it wasn't poor, it was none. We did no communication. I had many people who said, I didn't even know there were any questions on the ballot. I think there was some misunderstanding. I had three people who told me that they thought the town was trying to get away with something with that question, so they voted no because they didn't know anything else about it. So, I'm not 100% sure that everyone understood exactly what the Charter Revision Commission was recommending and what the council approved.
Okay, if I may, because I'm getting the ding-dongs already.
No, it's all right.
All right.
Tonight, we're running over on everything tonight.
I want to be more specific. All right. We are talking the Town Charter.
Yes.
It's not how the council feels about it, or doesn't feel about it, or anybody else feels about it.
Yep.
We're talking about the Town Charter.
Yep.
The Town Charter states that the Town Manager will reside in Plainville. So, I'm having confusion here. What's to be decided?
Well, because, you know, I think it's unrealistic to expect the Town Manager on day one to move into town.
No, I don't expect that, but I expect, if I may...
Yeah, go ahead.
What I don't understand is, part of the hiring process, when somebody's coming in, whether it be in this office here or in a private business or whatever, when you sit down and you apply for a job and you see the job description, the hiring manager will sit there and go bullet by bullet by bullet. So, in other words, when Mr. Frangos goes to work at that place, I'm not going to walk in and say, oh, I don't want to do this, or I know what you say here, but I'll do that. It doesn't work that way, and I don't mean any disrespect to our Town Manager. All I'm saying is, here's a Town Charter that's telling us what to do, and in essence, what you're saying to me is, as a citizen, all right, oh, this, the charter says this, but I live on this street, and I can do what I want, because that's what this is sounding like. And again, no disrespect to the Town Manager. I wouldn't care who's sitting there. All right? My point is this, if you're going to set up a criteria or how this will be done, do it. If you're not, fine, but let's get it cleared up. And what I'm seeing here now is respectfully being very evasive. Thank you.
I understand.
And I mean this sincerely to all parties concerned. I mean, no disrespect. I'm just telling you, as a citizen of Plainville, this is not adding up to mother.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? Mr. Frangos, a year and a half ago, we put together a team, a consultant, as the last council, to find the Town Manager. I think we interviewed probably, I don't know, Chris, what would you say, six, seven, maybe 10 people? And when they found out we had a residency clause, they said, well, I don't want any part of it. We, and that's not just one person, it was, most of the candidates didn't want to work here because they had to be a resident. And I want you to be aware, everybody that's looking at this tonight on TV land, that it is very difficult to acquire a house today. Your average small three-bedroom ranch is going, it used to go for $169,000, it's now $299,000 for a three-bedroom ranch, and that doesn't end there. It doesn't end there, because now they have a bidding war. They take all the people that want to buy this house, and they say, okay, what do you want to give me for in addition to it? I know this, because three years ago, I sold my house, we wanted a house without stairs, and I thought for sure it'd be easy to find a house. When a person offered me so many thousands of dollars in addition to what I was asking, I couldn't understand why they did that, because I didn't know at the time that they've already been through this market frenzy, and they didn't want any more of it. So, what am I saying? The inventory for houses right now is so low that you can't find anything, and if you can find something that you want, you're going to pay 35 to 40% more with a 7% mortgage in addition to making a bid on that house. If we were to release this man of his service, we would be confronted with the next guy coming into this town, trying to find the house and not finding it, or finding out that we want him to live here, and that's why we moved to have a charter revision, hoping that we could change that charter. We told Mr. Paulus that we thought for sure that the people would understand, but we never promoted... never promoted that. We didn't tell the residents of Plainville that maybe if you don't want this, that it would be temporary until the housing market improved, because right now, that housing market stinks. And I would hate to see this man have to come into this town and spend $300,000 for a small little house, which it isn't worth. And let's be honest about it, the first time we have a recession, that house is going to go down, because people will be laid off, they won't have employment, and they won't be able to afford it. And when they go to sell it, they won't be able to sell it, so the bank will take it back. We'll have houses. The banks will have hundreds of houses. It's just a matter of time before a recession hits us. We're already complaining about the economy, how bad it is. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but we're not doing... You're saying we're not doing our jobs. We're doing our jobs, because we know how hard it is to find a town manager. We went through that cycle a year and a half ago, and we couldn't find any quality people that I would have hired as a council member representing the people of this town. I want somebody that's good and somebody that's worthy of the job. We thought Mr. Paulus was the best guy for the job, and we hired him. That's the four of us here on this council right now. And if you were to let him go, you're not going to find anybody better, and you're not going to find a person that's going to want to work here and try to find a house at the prices that they're out there for.
Sure.
So we have to wait a little bit. He's got time before he's required to move into this town, and I think the council has some latitude that we could give him, because in fairness to what we did, we hired him with the notion that we could probably change his role, and we couldn't. So I say, I apologize for your embarrassment, because I know it's embarrassing to go through what people put you through, but in fairness to you, we told you that we were going to hire you, we were going to hire you, thinking that the housing thing would change. It didn't change, so we have to make some decisions here. But certainly, we're going to give him latitude to find the house. We're not going to just dismiss him just like that, because people are unhappy for whatever reason. It doesn't make sense to me. And if it doesn't make sense, I'm not going to vote for it.
Sir, if I may retort, I am not questioning the ability of our town manager. Let's clear the air on that.
Your question...
No, excuse me, sir. I'm talking about the position. I am talking about what it says in the town charter. I'm not pointing to this gentleman. I'm saying any town manager. When you sat down, when you sit down, again, if you're working, you apply for a job, you sit down with the hiring manager, and you go over the yeses and the noes and the yeses and the noes. Now, this subject must have come up at this meeting. I'm... It's an assumption on my part. This same thing that you're talking about had to come up at this meeting, because you're so adamant about it.
Yeah.
And if it did come about it, I think at that given point in time, the decision had to be made. I'd love to take the job, but I can't, and you've told me, 10 other people said no. And again, I want to emphasize, this is not a reflection on our town manager. I'm talking about a process, and I'm saying, go by the... This is what it says. In other words, you're telling me, look at the town charter, and if it doesn't agree with you, Louis, then I don't have to do it.
Mr....
That's all I'm here saying.
I did not say that. What I said is that when we hired him, we had no idea that the housing industry would be as poor as it is. So we have to look at that. You can't just say, that doesn't exist. People can't find houses today.
Sir, with all due respect, you saw this coming, and that's one of the reasons, one of the bullets that are in the election, was non-resident. So please, don't say nobody knew this was coming. It was right on the ballot, which was turned down.
I don't know why you're...
Everybody knew it was coming down. And again, I'm getting into something that, again, I don't want to emphasize, I keep pointing towards our town manager. I am not looking at this gentleman. I'm looking at the position. And now you're saying to me that in given situations, yes, in other situations, no.
All I'm saying is, why are you so anxious at this point to... For us to make a decision whether he stays or goes?
Clarity.
Because that's what you're saying here.
No, you want to know why?
Yeah.
Because I would think, when the contract, at least when I went to work for a living, they sat down and they gave me, this is your job description. And when I walked in the door the following Monday, I knew what my job description was in entirety. What you're saying now is, I guess there was a meeting, we'd like to hire, and we'll discuss the options later. That's what it sounds like.
No, that's not what it is, Louis.
It's none of my business what it is. All I'm saying that town charter says...
Listen, I'm a compassionate type of guy. I believe we should be a little bit compassionate to find a solution to this. Hold on one second. I think, you know, we've gone back and forth. I've let it go long enough.
Yes.
I mean, if, you know, I would say, certainly, you have our numbers if you want to talk further outside of here, or you can show up at the next meeting, and we can pick it back up. But at this point, unless you have anything new or anything else you want to... Anything else you want to address the council for?
So you're telling me the solution hasn't been resolved? That's what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And what is the intention?
The way you're phrasing it, yes.
Okay, what is the intention then?
I can't, I don't know.
So in other words, this can go on to infinity?
It could, yes, because the charter does not...
Thank you.
Yeah, it could.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's not our desire to have it go on infinity, but, you know, I do think, you know, we're certainly not going to ignore it, and I think that's the wrong characterization of this whole situation. But anyone else wish to address the council? Gail, you still want to talk, huh? After all that? All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just going to say, I attempted UConn Health Center for one year because of grievances, but that's okay. And anyhow, the director retired, and I wasn't working there then, but I came back for his party. And they were going to hire a new director, and they found such a good guy, but he didn't live in the state. That was a bad thing. And then when he did look around at the prices, he was coming from Ohio. He didn't realize how high the prices were going to be. So he just kind of like told them, I'm not going to be able to. But he was a really good person, and a good director would have been a great director. Now they have crap director. You know, why do you have to follow these stupid rules and end up with a stupid stuff? The only thing I have with him is, you're so quiet when you talk, I can't hear you. That's really, that's really... You know, I am going to get my hearing test in a few months. So maybe it's me, I don't know, but that's the only thing I have to complain about with you. So, let's see. I have a point to make about the election. This isn't... I do think that if somebody's running for an office with a rep or senator, that if they have to do, if they're in real estate, that's a conflict of interest, because they... Hopefully, I'm not on anybody's toes, but I feel like, I'll probably hear about it if I am. You know where... Oh, Gail Black, 4 C N C Avenue, so you can contact me there.
I like the way you worked that in.
I feel like what's happening is, the real estate people are, they're causing issues. Well, a lot of businesses have to close, or the businesses have to move, and, or go, you know, go into bankruptcy. One finally came back. Sir La Top... I can't, my French sucks. That's in Avon, and they finally came back. But plus mortgages go up, rent goes up, I can't find another place. And that brings back, brings me back to, are we going to like ban tiny houses in the state? I don't want that. I'd rather live in a tiny house than the Housing Authority. I just, that's really depressing. So I want my own house. Okay, so I guess that's it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Sorry. Anyone else wish to address the council? Anyone else? John, is that you raising your hand?
I can't speak to the council.
Oh, well, we could call you up later, maybe. All right. Yeah.
I can ask one question?
You've got 10 seconds.
Yeah. The septic to the, what do you call it? You know, converting. What's the cost of hook up? If you have a septic and you've got to have a...
Well, it... I mean, I think generally, we're talking, you know, I don't know what, some of the neighborhood, maybe $5,000 to $10,000, but a lot has to do with how many, what the linear footage is for you, you know, how many feet do you need to get from your house to the street? I mean, that's a variable that each house has to assess on their own, but I think generally, from some of the meetings we've had, $5,000 to $10,000 was the cost people were getting.
I'd just like to make a comment that I used to like to use Dove soap, but we had to have our septic redone in Burlington, and that really messes up your septic.
I'm sure those with septic would...
So, cut that out.
Okay. All right. All right, well, thank you. I'm going to close public hearing. On that note, Dove soap, that was something that was not on my bingo card tonight. What we'll do now, we will move now to old business. We do have the Honor Heights final assessment. I know Councilman Getteman had a question. If you still remember what it was, you're welcome to ask it.
I just want to clarify, under incentives connection for lateral, we have the grant for $1,000 slash 60 calendar days. What this is saying is, once you get the loan, as long as you hook up within 60 days, you'll get $1,000, you get your $1,000 grant? Is that what we're... Is that what this is saying?
We'll convert, right, in terms of, instead of being a full loan, $1,000 will be credited or converted to a grant.
But that's only if they hook up within 60 days of taking the loan out.
Yeah, and again, food for thought in looking at it and listening to the, you know, the discussion, and I certainly can agree that it may be difficult to line up a contractor and actually get the job done in 60 days. So, you know, you look at, you know, six months, you look at a year, who, you know...
I just wanted clarification, because I think there was a lot of confusion on what that 60 calendar days was actually for. You know what I'm saying? And I realize that's not a fluid number, that's a number that could change easily.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So I would think we would look to maybe change that number, and just, again, you know, instead of a $6,000 loan, whatever these calendar days we end up with, but ideally, the loan would be for $5,000, and you'd get a $1,000 grant, is what the incentive is there is. Instead of a $6,000 loan, it's only a $5,000 loan.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I don't think we're prepared to make, to make any motions tonight on that, and that will just simply stay under old business, and, you know, we will, like I said, next Monday at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, unless, Mr. Chairman, unless you, you know, you're taking this item up, and unless your, you know, your motion wants to be that, you know, you move to set a special meeting to take this item up at, I think that would be January 8th at 6:00 PM. That procedurally probably would work better than just taking no action and taking it up at the next meeting, just because it was tabled, and now you're, you've taken it up, and now you're going to take action.
All right, so let me, could I ask for a motion to add this, under new business, number five would be special meeting next Monday, January 8th at 6:00 in the council chambers?
It would actually be number six.
Well, I'd make it five.
Actually, I think you can just do it right now, because you're on...
Under old business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, under old business.
Following Robert's rules, technically, we would have to take this off the table, and then we would just make a motion to have a special meeting.
Make a motion to have a special meeting.
All right, so can I have a motion to take this off the table?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now, does someone, Councilman Getteman?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to have a special meeting on January 8th at 6:00 PM on the Honor Heights final assessment.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so we will be back here next Monday at 6:00 PM. We actually now can move on to new business. We have item number one.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the high school boiler replacement project for an additional amount of $181,300.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to award bid number 2024-05 Shuttle Metal Pump Station Rehabilitation to Kovax Construction Corporation, Oxford, Connecticut, in the amount of $3,45,885.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more questions, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to award bid number 2024-12S High School Boiler Replacement S K Mechanical LLC, Manchester, Connecticut, for a total amount of $879,300, which represents the base bid of $820,600, plus the alternate number one bid of $58,700.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number four. Councilman Getteman?
Oh, yeah.
Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Sorry. Motion to establish the MSP Building Project Communication Steering Committee for the purpose of developing, approving, and sharing information on the Middle School of Plainville renovate as new building project in preparation for the March 2024 referendum.
And just...
Do you want me to read off?
Read the names, please, yes.
The steering committee will be made up of six members as follows. Town Council Chairman Christopher Wazorko, Town Council Vice Chairwoman Rosemary Moranti, Board of Education Chairwoman Becky Tyrell, Board of Education Vice Chairwoman Rebecca Martinez, Town Manager Michael Paulus as an ex-official member, and Superintendent of Schools Brian Reese as an ex-official member.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and finally, item number five.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, you're on the roll.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Those, that motion carries. Item 12, other discussions of interest.